Maybe start.
We were on our last field and I think it was just.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it's seven o'clock to bring the city council meeting for August to order. Roll call. Okay. David said he would give us a call if he could get away for a minute. I haven't heard anything from anybody else. So we have Stephen, Creighton, and Gavin. We have Quorum. We can recognize our visitors in the gallery.
Lucas Becker.
Hi Lucas, thank you for coming again.
I'm Tyler Snow.
Hi Tyler.
I have Brian body doing Sunshine Disposal Board say.
All right. If we can, Stanford.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is custom, we want to get our meetings started if there's any public that have any comments that they want to open our meeting with. Something that's on the front side of everything.
Hey Cassie.
Yes.
Is this one I, is this one I?
This is when you stand up, yep.
Oh, okay. Do I need, can I, I mean, do I need to stand or do I just kind of sit here?
I think.
So maybe this is the, I hope this is the right meeting or whatnot, but I would like the city council to consider allowing my wife and I to put vending machines up at the park and work with the city in that capacity to to have that space and I haven't put much together because I didn't want to put too much into it, but there, I feel like it's a great opportunity for some, to start with a vending machine or two up there and then to come to, whether it's like a lease or a rent or a revenue base, kind of patronage for you guys and myself and whatnot.
Are you thinking like a soda machine or food or like candy?
I was gonna start with a canned machine because they're quite readily available. It'll get me into it kind of cheap and it's a, I don't know, it wouldn't be much of a revenue stream, but it would be a little bit of revenue stream for the both of us. And I think it's a great idea, so I was just wanting to come and see if you guys would consider something like that. My wife and I would be able to put together a proposal or something.
Where, like in, I guess where, like by where the barbecue station or the?
Bathrooms, I would imagine.
Or the bathrooms?
I was thinking on the east side of the bathrooms there.
Okay.
On the pavers?
I believe that's not, is that, I don't believe that's the pavers, I believe that's the porch slab. It would be on the, on the side, not in the front.
Well, I think there's pavers all the way around it.
Do they go all the way around?
I, I was in on it, I think.
Sure.
And there would be names on probably some of them.
Of course.
So in that respect, I probably would not be totally in favor of that.
That location or just?
Well, that location.
Unless pavers were moved.
Well, yeah. And I'm not moving them because it's horrible once you pull one out.
Yeah.
Well, no, I wouldn't want nothing like that to take place. We could, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
If you guys were even interested in something like that, we could get a little bit more.
You need power.
Of course, yeah.
There is, there is an outlet on the backside of the building.
Yeah. And there's power at the barbecue building too.
Would it be out of the question to pour like a little pad, just?
I want to, I, I want to think about this a little bit. I, I'm a.
Well, it's not an agenda item, so we can't vote on it today anyways. And we may want to have a public hearing, maybe. One other thing to consider, I would say, is that there's two factors that are really the same thing. One is that in the winter, we have been forced to have to close the bathrooms from time to time due to weather. Second of all, there have been open questions about whether we would close the bathrooms more preemptively than when it just gets bad in the winter. For the same reason is it's just kind of, the, the key of it is, is that last time things got broke is that the door didn't get fully shut, which might not have even been intentional, the wind might have caught it and kept it open.
The wind was pretty big.
Yeah, so instead of waiting to the last minute of, oh, it looks like the weather's bad, we better go lock it up. We have at least considered the possibility of saying, well, for these months or something, we're just going to shut that down.
Quite honestly, that's what we did this last year is when I saw the temperature going down to 20 degrees, it's like done.
So I'm bringing that up because maybe one of the equations that could be in your head is to think, well, a lot of people are stopping there year round to use the bathrooms, so that's a built-in source of traffic if I can get on those bathrooms. But just so you know, if we were to move forward with this, I don't think the council would see this as any kind of a binding obligation to keep the bathrooms open in order for you to get a rev, like you, just so you know about that and if you go move forward, you take what you get as far as it being.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, no, I get that, absolutely. No, I wouldn't think that would be the case. It's just, it is, it is a, since those got put in, that's like a focal point. Like you talk to people outside of town and they're like, Harrington, that park's nice. I mean, so, but yeah, even if, even in the wintertime, if they're closed and it makes more sense to, you know, to move the, the machines or the machine out of there and I put it into storage and we just know that it's gone and, or whatever. I mean, yeah, that, that part, yeah, absolutely. I wouldn't think that that would be, I wouldn't want to do that.
One other thing that I, I don't want to get in the middle of is there's two businesses that have vending machines in town already. And I'm not sure that the city should be in competition with these private enterprises. Whether renting or just giving the space to the, to you to put vending machines up. I think then we're kind of in direct competition with these other two businesses.
Well, I don't, I, I, you're not asking the city to do this. You're no, this would be, this would be myself.
No, I, I understand, but it would be leasing the space from us.
Okay.
And that's part of why I'd say it might be appropriate for us to, if we do even want to consider it further, to have a public hearing so that the people who could potentially be affected could speak for themselves if they even.
Care.
If they even care. And if they don't care, then I'm not going to care on their behalf, probably.
Right.
Gavin, did you have a question?
Oh, I was just gonna say that because of the temperatures and having to close the bathrooms down. I, I know that Austin down here, he's had cans blow up in there in the winter.
This last winter.
Yeah, so I was just thinking it might be something in, in the extreme cold, you would probably want to empty it out or even put it in storage just for a short amount of time.
I bet you they even have ones that have heaters.
Oh, they probably do, yeah. Or maybe you can put a, like I said, you could probably take the pop out of there and just for a couple of weeks.
And then would come, we'd have, have to meter whatever electricity to be fair.
Yeah, my, my biggest concern amongst all of that would be the vandalism, whether we like it or not.
I know, yes.
That park is just a magnet for just.
And, and that would be all on me. I wouldn't, that wouldn't be any part of the city. It would just be the frustration on my, my part of it. And if it worked, it worked. If it didn't, then I would say, hey, this has been really fun, but.
Go be Jerem and Em someplace else.
Yeah.
I'd hate to see.
I think it's a really good idea though. I really do.
Make a killing during Fall Festival.
There's people, it is amazing how many people use those bathrooms. The Lions Club should have put a pay station there. They might put them in.
And to the point, Fall Festival would be another.
Oh, that's true.
Point of competition that we would want to. I, I mean, I, I, I would, would we agree to say we're open to the concept enough to say, put a proposal together and we can look at the next step?
Yeah, I would be.
I guess I'm, I'm, it's not a hard no.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
We're gonna have problems to have to solve, but maybe we can start.
Yeah, it'll be my wife and I and I work in town and I live in Davenport and I've worked with plenty, you know, at least both of you.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we plan on being around, we plan on being local and just want to have an opportunity. So I appreciate it. Thanks guys.
Sure.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments or, of course, okay, moving on, any items?
You can go if you want.
Is that okay?
Yeah. No, we change you.
Public comments, otherwise you're waiting to the very bitter end to say what you just said.
I saw that, I saw that and I was thinking, well, I don't know where.
We have a vending machine in the back if you want a beverage.
We also chain the door closed.
Bathroom's a paved toilet.
If we have to be here, so do you.
Just want to stick around for the library board report.
Well, as long as, as long as we're buying books for kids, hopefully they're being read. So if that's, if that's what the underlying message is there, you're good.
Yep.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You bet. Okay, any items need to be removed from the consent agenda?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
Nope, okay, moving on. Any additions to the agenda?
For the record, what I requested out of last meeting is we can at least bring this up as placeholder that Ms. Barth wanted to be heard at this meeting. I do not see her to be here, but that was the agreement coming out of it. So if nothing else, I'm noting it on the council and the city's behalf that we are standing by our opportunity to continue to, to hear this matter.
So let me just ask this to clear the record. If I get asked from her to be added to the agenda, you guys are okay with doing it?
I don't know what cue it comes up.
It doesn't have to be listed as an action item, but if she can say it in public comment, I don't understand why she doesn't deserve a line item in the agenda. Right, we can't, we can't keep anybody from saying anything in public comments. So if there's an action to be, if there's a vote requested, that has a bit of a discretion of whether anyone's going to bring in action. But we have things on this agenda right now that are listed as discussion or discussion in general and don't have an A by them. I, I have no objection to a person wanting to raise something as an agenda item that they could otherwise speak to in their.
Across the board.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, I will take that under advisement the next time it comes up.
I wanted to bring up the corner, the northwest corner of First and Adams. The weeds.
Oh, and one other thing that I will add to it is discussion of what third-party material is hosted on city property.
Right. The library board report has been delayed until September, so you know. So that'll be on the agenda again. However.
Cameras on Creighton.
However, you can go Creighton. We did, I did get confirmation that the school board would in fact like to name that individual that I sent you guys.
Library board. School board, yeah.
Library board, sorry about that. The library board has nominated that individual to go, so it is time. There's, they're typically supposed to be the changeover on July 1st. Unfortunately, it sounds like we're going to be adding this again shortly thereafter because they've got another resignation off the library board. So we're gonna have to replace that soon too. But this one is just a regular annual rollover. So if anybody has any comments or suggestions or motions.
Can we make that board member position? We can vote on that tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are we there?
We're there.
Okay, I move that we accept Jody Morris as the library board mem- member.
Second.
We have a first and a second. To accept Jody Morris as the latest school, sorry, library board member, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, zero, thank you. Okay, I'm actually gonna switch it up a little bit from here. And since Brian is here, I'd like to bring the Sunshine Agreement Contract Amendment to the top, so he doesn't have to stick around. But he made himself available for any questions. This has been vetted back and forth, I don't know how many times, between the city attorney and their attorney. It was just, we're technically out of contract right now, so I'd really like to see if we can put this to bed. In my reading through this agreement, really the, the big thing that I took out of it was it clarified what happens if it becomes not feasible for Sunshine to continue to do the billing. That was probably the biggest thing in there that was kind of bannered back and forth. But all the rest of it was pretty, pretty much boilerplate stuff.
I would agree. In my reading through it though, I guess the question in my mind is it doesn't, and maybe it's really not designed to and that's fine, but it doesn't necessarily bring a lot of clarity to what would enact a changeover to it coming back to the city. It describes procedures for doing that. It's not really speaking to what, under what conditions those happen. Is that the goal here? Are we getting any more clarity over what would cause a trigger to have that revert back to the city or?
I didn't really dive down that rabbit hole as far as what are the things that have to, the way I read it, it's as vague as if they just say they're out, they don't want to do it anymore. It could be as simple as that.
That's what it looks like to me. If they don't want to do it anymore, we really have no recourse.
Right, and which means we go back effectively to the way we've been doing it for years and years.
I have no objections. I don't really see that it meaningfully changes the nature of the situation.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's one hand, it's they do the billing, on the other hand, we do the billing. It is probably an extra hour or two a month for the clerks to input that information.
So if we do the billing, do we get a cut in the contract, what we pay?
That's a really good question. I don't think that's written into it.
Yeah, it's not written into it. I mean, there's always opportunities to have a, a discussion, reopen the contract and modify the contract, much like we're doing right now. I think that'd be something we'd want to deal with as the, the time comes. I think there's really three options there. We continue to do the billing, the city takes the billing over, or we, we decide that we're no longer going to do the billing and in which case we give it up a lead time for the city to be able to make a different choice. I think our goal is to be able to come to an amicable solution here and maybe just to back up a little bit. The, when we started doing the billing, this was kind of a, a year-long pilot program. I think, and talking this through and how it worked and kind of really dissecting that, that year long, neither party really put their best foot forward. So we're gonna just sort of reset that and try the pilot again to see how it works, make sure that we're able to do what we need to be able to do to get the billing done. I think we've, I would say smoothed out, I suppose, some of the rough spots in terms of those who were falling behind in payment and billing. We've kind of worked out a little bit of a, a better system to be able to stay on top of that as partners in that process. And so that's where we've kind of tried to reset the timeline a little bit, giving both parties the opportunity to put their best foot forward and really evaluate how it's going after a year.
Am I wrong then? If someone is behind in their bill, you're basically passing it on to the city for the enforcement part of that, instead of like going to a credit bureau or something like that?
We, we still have the ultimate ability to go to, to credit service. What we wanted to do is have an interim step so that we don't go straight to, to that process. There's a lot of reasons life happens that people fall behind and we don't want to jump to that and try to resolve it at the lowest possible level first. And if that's not successful, then we reserve right to do that.
I mean, I can understand, I really can understand why you wouldn't really want to be in the billing. But I also had an account out in the country and I didn't have, you did bill me and that was no problem at all. I guess I don't have, I don't see why the city needs to get into the billing business. This seems like a lot easier for us if you do it, but I can see where it's a lot easier for you if we do it. And so we're at a quandary here and I also reading this and I'm not an attorney, don't even, didn't even stay in whatever the motel is. But it does look like you have a really easy out. We don't have much enforcement on making you go ahead and do the billing.
And I think the challenge here is, and I'm not an attorney either and didn't stay in the motel either, but.
Holiday inn.
Holiday inn, okay, thank you.
But I think the, the challenge here is we can do everything we can to try to collect. We ultimately don't have the authority to be able to do some of the things that, that you do as a city. So that's where we're, we're trying to come to this partnership agreement where we can work together to do it. And we're not talking about everybody here, we're talking about a, a decreasing number of, of accounts that are in arrears. So like I said, we think we've smoothed it out a bit to where it's, it's pretty functional at this point in time. But you know, with, with any transition, there's gonna be a little bit of growing pains and we've both experienced those. And so we're, we're back here saying we'd like to be able to work together to keep smoothing it out, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, I move we accept the amendment to the, to the contract.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a first and a second to accept the Sunshine Disposal Contract. Any further discussion?
My vote is independent upon this, but I guess there's only one thing that I'm still a little confused on. And I haven't gone back to the meeting recordings to verify whether I'm crazy in this, but I could have sworn, and I'm not the only councilman or member who seems to have remembered it this way, that at one point in time, we had a representative from Sunshine telling us that we were previously in the arrangement that we did have, one of very few cities in your, in your guys' service area that still did the billing. And then later on down the road, it's, it seemed like, no, that's reversed. Now that you guys are doing the billing, that seems to be like we're, I notice you used the word pilot program, so, and I see that you guys have a whole billing infrastructure on your website and stuff. So obviously you build private parties a lot. So I guess, I don't know, this isn't probably a question that is material to whether we accept this amendment or not, but I'm just curious, what, what is the nature of this, the services that you provide the other cities? Do you, do you guys do the billing for other cities or not? And, and why does it seem like Harrington is uniquely struggling with, with a problem that's should be very common to most of the cities in, in this area?
I, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I can tell you that you're the exception rather than the rule. We don't do the billing for a lot of the, the cities. I, I wouldn't say Harrington's unique in terms of struggling with it. I think it probably comes with, anytime there's a little bit of transition, you, you go through some growing pains that, that smooth it out. But I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't characterize it as Harrington's struggling. And I think you get to a point where you get those who have had some life events happen and that's why they're, they're behind on their billing. Those get sorted out and then you get to the point where there's a percentage of customers, whether it's Harrington or anybody. the point where there's a percentage of customers, whether it's Harrington or anybody else, where you're gonna just struggle with them no matter what, for whatever reason you struggle. I think that's kind of where we're at at this point in time.
Okay.
And that original conversation predates me, but as I understand, the change occurred and the discussion was about trying this out to see if it was gonna work.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of accepting the Sunshine disposal contract, or amendment, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Just thank you. And thank you, Brian, for.
Yeah, thanks for coming down.
Oh, yeah, appreciate the time and the conversation. If you have other questions, let me know.
Thank you. I'll reach out to, I'm assuming, December, we probably start talking about, what, 2026? Looks like?
Yeah, yeah. And then just procedural, Mark will need to sign, and you'll need to sign, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it taken care of.
Sounds good. I'll work out with you who sends what gets signed.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
So, okay. Back on the schedule. Our clerk is going to give, so the precursor to this is, she and I, I had this idea in my mind how we were formulating our fees, and that's not how she had formulated it. So that's, when we had our public hearing, that was the confusion, is I was coming at it from one point of view, and there was a completely different other point of view, so I'm gonna shut up and just let Cassie explain how it should look.
So as I prefaced in my earlier email, I am really sorry for that confusion. I did write this in cubic feet, since that is the direction that we will eventually be headed when we replace meters throughout the city in our water system plan. After, initially, I did have it proposed that we would have a higher base rate, after speaking with a majority of you who wanted to keep it more level with what we currently have, which is 5,000 gallons. I, the new proposal shows the base rate of being the first 700 cubic feet or less, which is 5,236 gallons. And then the proposed rates going up by small increments for additional 100 cubic feet, with the gallons indicated on each tier. Hopefully that is a lot less confusing to read. Again, sorry for the initial confusion on that.
So basically, if I'm reading into this, the goal is to have the majority of the city paying the base rate?
Yes, because currently, the majority of citizens do stay under 5,000 gallons. Those who water extra go up a little bit outside of that, but usually not that much. You know, of course, we don't want to punish people for keeping their yards nice, we do want to encourage, you know, nice vegetation through town, so we're hoping that these will help to keep our budget sustainable. As you can see from the printouts that I gave you of the 2024 utility rates for water, the revenues are less than the expenditures, and they're continuing to trend out. So hopefully this will help to bridge that gap.
Okay, so, you've got wastewater.
This is the same thing that you sent us, right? These, this?
Yeah. Those are just in paper forms, you can see.
Okay.
So let's talk about water system stuff first. So when we look at a seven grand deficit on income and a 14.7 grand deficit on expenses, when we're talking about water system costs, are we factoring in, like, when we pulled well number one, is that being?
That was considered a maintenance item, yes.
Okay, so that is factoring into expenses?
Yes.
Okay, so, I guess, one thing that I note, that at least in terms of expenses, this is not really reflecting, well, okay, there's perhaps an argument to how a person wants to consider this, but in terms of year-to-year run rate, some of these things are factoring in once in X number of years hits, which, yeah, every year there's gonna be those, but just to say, if the goal is to try and bring it up to average, every year is gonna be off of average, because this year we had to do this street, and then this year we had to do this well thing, and then this, so you're never gonna hit average, because you don't really know what average is until you look backwards.
So if I may answer that, so what, these don't represent, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are no pass-through monies in here?
Those are no pass-through money from commerce or department.
This is no water system plan or any of that stuff that's already?
Right, I guess, but what I'm getting at is if, what we could probably say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that a lot of the differences in expenditures of estimated versus actual comes down to infrastructure improvements that we decided to pursue.
Yes, yes, and also to factor in the fact that we currently don't have a reserve that would normally cover unexpected expenditures like this, and it's recommended by MRSC to have a reserve of 45 days or 12.3% of the budget. So that was also a consideration in looking ahead at future budgets.
The unfortunate reality is, you know, and we can change this, but, I mean, what I'm gonna say, that's not gonna happen, best-case scenario, for four years, and that's that a bucket of money falls out of the sky, and we were able to pay to have every water line replaced. So every year, and these numbers are not just pumps and electricity, it's the cost of those materials to do repairs and entire blocks to redo, it's the labor, it's, it's just the overall expenditures of what it costs to run, maintain, and repair a water system, and the same argument for the wastewater system.
Does, are you, are you done?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the biggest thing, is, I mean, and in addition to that, yes, former administrations of the city did a pretty good job of accumulating some of these reserves, while these last bits, we've kind of beat them up a little bit with some of the things that we had to do. So, no, I'm done.
So with the expenses, then, does this represent, are we, are we taking a portion of something like the VAC truck and putting it in here? Are we?
For, that would be definitely a budget amendment item to discuss how, like, how we want to allocate portions of that purchase.
But that, but these numbers don't currently reflect that as a?
No, those currently do not reflect the purchase of the VAC or truck, or any other equipment, large equipment that was been purchased by the city.
Okay. And then as far as income deficits, what is our, do you know roughly what are the current amount of unpaid utility bills we have outstanding? Because when it comes to budgeting, we have to theoretically budget as if everyone's going to pay. So if we had, and I'm not saying we do, but we have had this number before, let's say that we had $14,000 in outstanding utility bills, well, that would erase the $7,000 in income deficit to this point, potentially, right? So in terms of, if you're adjusting budget, we have to understand where is this deficit coming from? Is it because everyone's paid up and we're charging too little, or is it because if everyone had actually paid what they were supposed to pay, we'd be right on the money?
So right now, a very rough estimate would be, I would say, probably around 3,000 to 4,000 in deficit and payments maximum, based on the last utility billing payments that have come in and larger outstanding balances.
Yeah, the city is back on track with being very clear about outstanding balances not being, going forward. I will say this, the outstanding balances that we have right now that are the larger portions, and they're still well under five digits, those properties are vacant.
So they aren't continually to add to the?
No, well, they're not adding to the cost.
Right. Just as a cleanup thing, your bulk water here, you have, what would read is 60 cents a gallon?
6 cents per gallon, yes.
Well, 6 cents per gallon or .6 cents per gallon?
It's supposed to read 6 cents, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, then there needs to be one more zero in front of that. That's pretty expensive, at 6 cents a gallon. I was thinking it'd be six tenths of a cent, okay.
Other cities do charge up to 20 cents per gallon.
Okay, well, could you just put the zero on the other side of the decimal point? Then that'll make more sense to me.
Hold on, let me get a calculator on here. While I'm punching this in, I just want to say, Cassie, thank you for your work in pulling this together. I appreciate the thought you've put into it.
So do you think this will, these raises should get us fairly even?
I think that it is going to be a really good start, and then as we adjust and amend the budget for the next round, we can, we'll have a better point to go forth with.
To start from.
Yeah, this will, this will help us get in that direction, and we'll just stay on with our budget rules and our goals and our projections, and I'll do, I'll do my very best work to offer as realistic projections as possible.
One of the unfortunate things, you know, one of our overhead items that we have almost zero control over is Avista.
And those rates are increasing, we did get a notice that those, those will be going up next year.
That's good.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys are able to see, like, breakdowns in the electricity, but well pump three does drop quite a bit of power.
Well, should be less than it was before the changes, for what that's worth.
It should be, I think it's using less electricity, but because of the cost of electricity going up, we're right back where we were.
Well, and let, not completely unrelated, but as it comes to electricity, I was in the post and office when David Funk was in there, and his statements about what he's doing for the school with solar made me think just a little bit more about whether there's anything left for the city, because sources of electricity that don't come from Avista could be very beneficial for us before some of these things close, if we're not already too late, which perhaps we likely are, but.
The last time I queried was about three months ago, two, three months ago, and I was told that pretty much that project is going to tap out this area for consideration.
Yeah.
And we don't have the infrastructure to mount solar, that many solar panels on.
We actually have a couple of properties that really can't.
Well, if you just put them on properties.
Yeah, we do, we have some rock piles that would be fine.
We've got a tri, like a two-acre triangle.
I know, I mow it.
Oh, I know, just rocks.
He's talking about the one on the other side of the track.
Oh, okay, on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish you'd mow that.
But I, I mean, that was kind of my idea, it's like, this land is worthless.
That would be a perfect place.
It's got nothing obstructing it, I mean, wind would be your biggest danger. Anyway, that's a different thing, but yes, I did look into that, because I would love to find out if I need to put in solar panels to help offset.
I think we should see if David, if the council has no objection, I'll ask David on behalf of the council if there's anything left to even discuss.
Well, he's, he'll have lots of information.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
We also own, I didn't realize this, but we own the parcel land where the shop is, straight across the highway. We own a good chunk of that.
And we do own quite a bit down by the lagoons, too.
Yeah, ironically, though, that's outside of the city limits.
Does that make a difference?
Probably shouldn't, and that would make a lot of sense, since the power station's right there, if we were pumping it back into the grid.
Yeah. Okay, so, what I was poking around on a calculator for is that when you look at the cost per gallon, and here's my math on this, so that anyone can check me, and I'm just looking at the first tier instead of calculating all of them, but if you take the first tier, which is listed at $1.05 for the first 100 cubic feet of overage, right? So it says up to 6,732 gallons. So you take that number minus what's included in the base rate of 5,236 gallons, gives you a difference in that tier of 1,496, okay? It costs a $1.05 for that 1,496 gallons, right? So if you take a $1.05 divided by 1,496 gallons, then what we're charging per gallon, just in that first tier, and it goes up slightly for the others, but again, when you're talking about per 1,500 gallons, it's not, I mean, it does not appreciably change at all. You're talking about .07 cents per gallon.
Whereas I think right now, we're, what did we figure out, 25 cents per 1,000 gallons is what our pricing is today?
So that'd be .02.
But I guess what I'm saying is that this change is, so, when you're talking about .07 cents, and even, I'm sure Cassie's done due diligence to say that this might well be in line with what other cities are charging, whatever, by whatever, I'm not meaning to be dismissive, but I'm, I'm not saying these are bad numbers, but I'm just saying, when you're talking about .07 cents per gallon, I don't know that this is actually an appreciable raise. I guess, and maybe what I'm asking for, Cassie, here is, if I'm wrong, please correct me, because what I don't see the intersection of it here is this. If we're saying that most people are gonna stay within the 5,000 gallons, which, I'm not sure how that's gonna be true, because at least for myself, I have a water, separate water meter on my irrigation system. I know that I've used 40,000 gallons on one half of my irrigation system this month, and that, those numbers were true.
Right, and to add some consideration to this statement, there are concerns that meters may not be working or aren't working properly, so there's, again, we have a whole water system plan going on to try to change all of this, so there's a lot of factors that way. Current rates for overage is like 5 cents per thousand, or .5 cents per, yeah, per thousand, and it's, I didn't want to, like, sticker shock people, because moving forward, council has discussed adjusting rates yearly, so that was one factor that I considered as I looked at what other cities charge and how they, how they break down their charges. They all kind of do things just a little bit differently. I just wanted to try to get things brought to a level that would help us kind of stay current with our expenditures.
Right, yeah, no, and I, I'm not meaning to in any way criticize the way in which you came up with it, I'm just, I'm just not sure these are enough, and I know I have more lawn than, I don't have probably the most lawn in town, but I have above average. So when I'm saying my numbers, I'm willing to stipulate that probably a lot of people in town don't have nearly as much lawn, or they might not be trying to get it as green as I am, so there's, you know, you can consider my case probably in above-average situation with it. But if, I was saying, if I'm, if I end up doing 80,000 gallons in a month, just to pick a number out of thin air, then 5,000 of those gallons are included in my base rate, and then if the increments are gonna be 1,496 per? in my base rate, and then if the increments are going to be fourteen ninety-six per increment, then I would go through fifty increments over the base rate, which means that I would forty-three, I would get there, and then a dollar, and a dollar, and a dollar, and a dollar, and then a dollar twenty-five for each of those after there, and that goes up to twenty-two. Wait a minute, is that getting?
Your water bill would be approximately sixty bucks.
Yeah.
For a larger lawn that.
Which I'm sure I'm using at least eighty thousand, I'm probably closer to a hundred thousand.
I know that my overage, I live in a different city, but my overage in the very warm summer months, and I do have a larger grass lot than most normal people, and I, I will, I will get to up to forty dollars in overage.
Now, if it's a hundred thousand, it'd be seventy dollars of overage approximately, if it's point zero 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 seven per gallon.
So basically what that means is our water tower is seventy bucks.
Yeah.
Because it's a hundred and fifteen thousand gallons.
That's true.
Wait, okay.
Calculated the gallon, per gallon, right?
Yeah, so this, this is why I'm confused, I think some of this wording here is confused. Okay, so if we look at the first tier, it says for each additional one hundred cubic feet or between seven oh one cubic feet and eight hundred, so that matches. Next tier, for each additional one hundred cubic feet between nine oh one and a thousand, that matches up. Then the next tier after that, for each additional one hundred cubic feet or between one thousand and one and two thousand, so that just jumped from a hundred to a thousand cubic feet in the third tier. So I, I'm confused, does this mean that I'm paying a dollar fifteen for each a hundred cubic feet between that range? Is that what that's trying to say?
I figured that would be a really rare tier to reach, but we can definitely amend this as we feel is appropriate and fix it.
Well, so I guess what I'm saying is, what, where, what is the intention? Is that, is that saying that that dollar fifteen is for a thousand cubic feet or for a hundred cubic feet?
I, well, I was supposed to be.
The way everybody is for a hundred cubic feet.
Per, per one hundred in that tier bracket.
Well, because the difference is, is that if these tiers are talking about a dollar per hundred cubic feet, then for, to get up to my eighty thousand, that's going to be about sixty dollars of overage per month over the top of the base rate, so make a water bill of around a hundred and ten dollars. Whereas if in the third tier, this is switching to a thousand cubic feet for a dollar fifteen, then Creighton's calculation of, of things is more in line with what we're talking about.
I think the word or is the confusion in that descriptor. At least everything I'm looking at says per, for each additional hundred cubic feet.
Well, but the thing is, so the gallonage, if you're looking at the gallonage progression, the base rate is including five thousand two hundred, the first tier is including six thousand seven hundred, so fourteen hundred gallon, fifteen hundred gallon difference. The third tier is including seven thousand four hundred and eighty, so that's another fifteen hundred difference.
And you're actually missing one tier, you're missing between eight hundred and nine hundred cubic feet.
This is true.
Yep.
Yep, I realize my mistake, I can definitely, we can definitely fix this.
I mean, I don't care if you add it between eight hundred and a thousand, or you make another tier, doesn't matter to me.
I'm, I'm just saying, whether we're, whether we're chunking this by a hundred or whether we're, whether we're changing to chunks of a thousand cubic feet, make the difference probably for the three of us and anybody with lawns like us of about a difference of sixty dollars a month difference. Which, I don't know, I mean, considering how in the hole we're going to be with water costs in general, maybe either, either of those are things to debate, debate, but it's not even close for those with huge lawns, so we need to know which one we're actually saying.
Well, I definitely didn't try to like hijack this completely and be like, this is what I want to do, so, yeah, I, yeah, I can, let me, let me fix the.
Mark it up. We've got the pen, yeah, mark it up. What do you, how do you guys want to see it break out?
Because what, what this potentially sets up as the question is, is a gallon of water getting more expensive as we go along, or is it getting less expensive? Because in the first tier.
I try to, I try to, you know, kind of, not necessarily like even out, but not get, we typically don't see a ton of water usage from, from people, because most people stay low. When we get to a certain point of seeing that, that kind of usage in billing, that would trigger us to say, is there something going on outside of normal? And normally meter reads would take care of that, but with some issues with meters in the city, that's not always the case, so we would be able to say, okay, where, where do we need to look at to see if there's an issue?
Sure.
We definitely don't want to.
Yeah.
We don't want to overcharge people, we want to keep things, you know, in line with.
Right.
Where, you know, where they, where they need to be, that makes sense, so we can, we can hash out verbiage on how we want each tier to be broken down until we find something that works for the council to pass for the city.
Yeah, no, I, and, and that's fine, I'm just saying, the third overage tier, when it goes to increments of a thousand versus a hundred.
I accidentally made a cut and I forgot to, forgot to fix that before I sent it over, and I'm so sorry about that.
But I think in a larger context, I would maybe advocate for, I don't think we should even really have tiers, I think it should just be a base rate and then a cost per gallon.
Cost per gallon.
And, and part of the reason for that, in my opinion, is if we're really trying to get ourselves out of the hole in terms of costs and make things even, why is it that, like, any gallon, if I use eighty thousand gallons, is my first a thousand gallons cheaper to pump out of the ground than my seventy-ninth thousand gallon? I mean, I, there is no economies of scale for us in how we're delivering it, it's not like we buy a bigger truck and we get a, a lower, I mean, it, it's, in theory, every gallon has the same cost to us, so why are we passing it along to the citizen in a different way? That's not what we did with garbage, with garbage, we said we want to pass the costs along to the, to the citizen in the exact same way in which we incur them.
That is definitely a good streamlined way to go, not all city, I haven't seen a city that does that, but if we currently do something similar, and it would be, like I said, the only reason that I started in cubic feet was because a lot of the.
Well, and, and we could say, we could say a, a fixed cost of cube, per cubic feet, it's not about which, which unit of measure we use, but instead of a tiered system, I don't understand the argument really for a tiered system.
It makes programming a lot easier, don't get me wrong.
Right, and we can adjust that later as well as we revisit this yearly, and still gallons right now would work for the city right now.
Well, if we're going to pass this, though, we need to know what.
Well, no, actually, passing. Well, and I don't think we can do it right now, we need to come to an agreement as a council before we can try this again as a public hearing.
Well, we don't have to, okay, so, some research, hey, we've had public hearings.
Yes, but we haven't had, but we haven't had any numbers, like, you can't, I don't think you can say that we had a public hearing and yet nobody who comes from the city can say what numbers were even being considered, we don't know, because that kept changing.
If rereading the rules, and I didn't believe this, I had to read it myself, we actually, when it come, the only thing that is wired for a public hearing before you pass the utility rate is solid waste, is garbage.
Right.
Technically, you can change water and sewer rates as needed, the only criteria is, we can't change it effective tomorrow because that's then charging for something that's already been consumed, so the recommendation is you always make your rates effective sixty days in the future, so you just take all of that variance out of it. But technically, I thought a public hearing was required, technically it's not, it's a good idea, but technically it is not.
Good to know.
So the base rate is basically point eight cent, eight, three cents a gallon is what the base rate is?
Yeah, although it's different than like a Vista, you pay eight fifty and it includes no, no kilowatt hours, right? So.
So are we trying to charge something for the hookup? Are we charging thirty dollars for the hookup and then the rest is the first five thousand gallons?
We effectively are, that's what we do right now, so everyone has that base rate and it includes five thousand, what do you use or not?
So, when you're applying for grants and everything, the state sort of tells you how to do that, do they require a tiered system as part of the water grants?
Well, the state does not stipulate how it's made, but they're less likely to offer a grant for a water system.
That doesn't have some sort of encouragement to use less.
Not working, A, to encouragement to use less, and B, is not subsustaining.
Okay.
They're not going to subsidize the city's plan or water system if the city's not taking care of the rates, so.
Yeah, I don't want to pay point eight cents a gallon, that eighty thousand all of a sudden gets to six hundred bucks.
Time to get astroturf.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not saying that the price, I, I, I think we should adopt a system that's more like what we have for Avista is to say that you have a base rate that includes zero gallons, and then it's just a cost per gallon or a cost per cubic foot after that point, and it's not nearly eighty cents, because eighty cents, again, is not, it's not actually eighty percent per gallon in reality.
Point eight cents.
Or point eight cents, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to put, I'm working on putting together a little graph here that might help us understand this, in the meantime, let's talk about wastewater treatment plant stuff. Can we talk about why there's a differential there? Because with the water system, I understood that, because like even the questions I asked initially, I know we've made infrastructure investments, I could understand inherently where a lot of those differences were coming from. Why, when we look at the wastewater treatment plant, we are under income by sixteen thousand dollars and we are over on expenses by five thousand dollars is more of a puzzling to me. I'm willing to stipulate, we probably have never had income hit the mark on wastewater treatment plant, so having it be under on income is not surprising to me, sixteen thousand under on income seems surprising, so can you give some information on why we're twenty grand in the hole through the first two quarters on that?
I can speak to some of the.
That seems like a year's worth of deficit and we're not even done yet.
So this year, we have had to go in and replace a number of aging and inefficient sewer systems, I mean sewer lines. Up on Fifth, we've had to have one of them robed and rooted twice to cut the, the roots out of it because it was backing up. On the north end of town, we had to run a new sewer line for probably, I guess, a quarter of the distances, the city is wide, because over the time, it had either failed or settled and it was not on grade and wasn't flowing, so it was backed it up as it got to the bottom. One of the inherent problems that we have is when they're running into these and they're opening them up, they're finding that the grade for a lot of our sewer lines is one percent, which might be enough to roll some water downhill, but when the water and other things have to go downhill, it's not enough of a grade. On a totally side note, I have to check, but I'm considering asking the city to participate in the Great Harrington Flush.
And this is projected as, if you're looking at 2025, that is projected based on data to, to the first half of the year. On the back of the printouts that I made, I think I sent those to you as well in your emails, but on the, on the printed copies, there is a breakdown of actual operating expenses, which aren't considering what we've needed to, but those do, those do consider the, the debt repayments, but not pass through funds from other sources like commerce. And also considering, you know, trying to consider building up a reserve, which, again, just like the water system plan, it's encouraged to have a forty-five day reserve or a twelve point three percent reserve for, for that utility as well.
In short, the, the electricity costs for our wastewater treatment plant are significant, it's one of the bigger items with all the pumps and irrigators that we have to run. And we have had to replace quite a bit of sewer line this year.
And personnel expenses are higher as well because of the time spent mostly by public works, working on, on the man-hours on, on the sewer.
Yeah, the, for sewer line, the sewer line itself is not horrifically expensive, but the labor putting it in and getting it done is time consuming.
So in other words, we're on track for a thirty-five thousand dollar deficit in wastewater treatment?
If we continue the trend that we've been going, but I'm, I'm hopeful that maybe we've gotten a lot of the, a lot of the big things that we've snagged this year under control and optimistic that we won't have more.
Can you look up what deficit we ran last year in wastewater treatment, please?
Was that on that sheet?
Do you have the 2024?
Oh, yeah, I guess I do have that, don't I?
Yeah, there should be operating expenses as well attached to that one, and we need a breakdown of personnel expenses and income if you wanted those in the papers.
That was for you, if you want. Oh, I got it.
Twenty-two in the.
Twenty twenty-five, so it's twenty twenty-four.
Something's wrong with that.
What?
You should have it, yeah.
Yeah.
Those numbers are flipped, the, the black should be in red.
When I'm looking at the 2024 wastewater treatment PDFs, they have 2025 on them. So when I look at 2024 WWTP operating costs, it's coming up with 2025 Q1 and Q2 annual water system costs.
Okay, let me try sending it again over to you. Are you able to open Excel spreadsheet or no?
Probably.
Here, this, this might.
Okay, thank you. So we ran a seventy grand deficit last year?
Yes.
No, I didn't remember that. So, hey, we're, we're improving. We're only on track for a thirty-five deficit.
I sent the spreadsheet over, there's four components of it, hopefully you can edit them, I did make a whole printout if you want to look at the table.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
This is, the reason we talked about and came up with these pieces of information is because it dawned on me that using Springbrook and the budgeting software in there is confusing, deceiving, and make, can make it look like things are hunky-dory and they're not.
It's true.
Especially with all the pass-through monies and all the rest of it, it's like, what, we've got all this money and, you know, going in and out, you know, why can't you spend? It's like, what? We've got all this money and, you know, going in and out, you know, why can't we spend it better? A lot of it is not our money.
Okay, so what, what takeaways do you want from us here tonight?
Well, the takeaway that, the takeaway that I want is that, I mean, this shows in vivid numbers that not adjusting, there's two problems with not adjusting our rates. One, like I just mentioned, what we are looking at trying to get grants and other assistance, which we desperately need to do these improvements through the city, they are not going to lend to us or let us have money if they're just feeling like they're subsidizing a, a system that is not, is not being proactive about paying for itself. So that's one. Two, you know, we haven't, especially water, we've not adjusted grades since I've been in the, here. And everything else around it has gone up in cost. We would have been much worse off had we not had COVID money that we threw at a lot of these projects.
True.
So the bottom line is our rates are not sustainable. This, the city is not going to be able to pay for the water system. What I've learned since I've taken this job, the water system and the wastewater systems are supposed to be self-sustaining by themselves, not subsidized by other revenue streams. And they look at that and they're actually going to be looking at us as part of our water system plan we're trying to get approved. They want to see that we are on track to be self-sufficient on our operating costs on a budgetary basis for five years. And you're right, you can't, we don't know. Are we gonna have a wonderful year where we don't have a single water leak and no, no pipes to bring up? Or are we gonna have another one like last year where everything seemed to be blown open and split and open? Whether we like it or not, the, the era of having a hundred-year-old water is over. Notice that equipment doesn't exist. And if we're not planning on replacing well number three right now, because that has a thirty to forty-year lifespan, we're not doing ourselves any favors and that's the purpose of those reserves. So that's quite obviously the takeaway. Quick question, since you guys are calculating things, do you want to hear about, or are you ready to show? Okay, you're ready to show.
So this is what the, what the current proposal reflects. The blue line is the total cost for gallons up to over a hundred thousand. So at a hundred thousand gallons, it, that, it's sixty-two bucks. And then we can see that the cost per gallon is falling dramatically, yes, from the, the, the start of, for the base rate inclusion, but it's continuing to go further and further down, especially as things shift to thousand cubic foot increments instead of a hundred. So and you can kind of see that total cost there, just bump it and then it goes straight afterwards as it hits the max on, on that, so. It's not a fish graph, but.
It's a beautiful graph.
It's a globe.
So do you want to, what are you guys want to do? Ultimately, it's, see you guys making those decisions about where the rates go, if they go.
I, I guess I would, I would ask the other council members here at least, whether you guys, it's important to you guys to have a tiered system because I think all this gets really simple if you say, what is the cost of a thou, of a cubic foot of water? Or a thou, you know, a hundred cubic feet of water or something like that. Then there's really not a complexity to it. It's like, what's the residential rate? What's the commercial rate? So let it be written, so let it be done. Probably a base rate, a connection fee, and that's, that's the whole kit and caboodle. Otherwise, we're gonna have to talk about, is it always going to increment by a hundred? And then does it shift to a thousand? Is everything by a thousand? Should things get cheaper as they get more, you know, as, as a person uses more? Should they get more expensive as a person uses more to encourage them to use less?
So there, I will say not that it's necessarily Harrington's problem, but the state does look at what are we doing? What are we, what are we presenting to promote people to use less water? I mean, the city only has really two commodities, water and wastewater. So they, this, this state, and I've, they're constantly barrage me with stuff on, you know, how to get citizen buy-in on how to conserve water, how to conserve water, how to conserve water. So giving, giving water at higher volumes for cheaper is not going to play into their narrative. Like I said, not necessarily Harrington's problem, but that's a state point of view.
Well, and by doing this tiered syst, tiered system, at least the way we have set up and probably it sounds like mirroring similar cities around us. That's what's being done is it's making it, i- i- if it, if it's moving to larger increments as you move down the system, then it's actually making more usage cheaper per gallon than less usage.
Personally, I like, I like both systems. I'm not a big water user. Anybody can look at my yard and see that.
I would agree with that. Just saying.
Honest to God truth.
I would think that most people would agree on a simple per, per gallon usage fee.
I, I could think of, like, if you're gonna go with the base rate, but per gallons, right? So you start at the base rate that has the five thousand gallons, that you may have one more tier that is a little bit lower than the per gallon one that comes after that, every gallon after that, so that you could encourage people that would fit inside of that.
Which is effectively what we do right now.
Yeah. And it leaves rain for like the sunshine man says, as things come up. Occasionally people will go over that and they, they would like to probably not feel like every gallon was punitive as that first thousand or two thousand they did. So that they would hopefully try to make the conscious effort to stay within that first tier, even if it is just one tier beyond it.
Or like I said, do you, do you just change it like a Vista does? You just charge a flat rate because there is a connection? And then it's just usage after that?
I would.
Well, I just quickly, like a thirty-five dollar basic fee. And then that first five, five thousand gallons ends up being point zero zero one six. Well, yeah, times that by eighty and all of a sudden we're up to eighty thousand gallons. You're up to eighty more dollars on the bill. Now, us hundred thousand gallon users can, so then I just went with zero zero one, like one tenth of a cent per gallon. And that would be approximately eighty more, eighty dollars for the water plus the thirty-five dollar hookup fee. So that'd be a hundred and five dollars a month just for water. On us big users, which I'm, I would almost guarantee I'm in at eighty thousand. We have a big yard and.
You're not bashful.
No, it looks really nice right now. And I guess it, we, God, I, I'm driving around town and all the people that don't water, just don't water at all. Number one, it looks horrible. Number two, I do think it's kind of a fire hazard. And so I don't think we want to price people out of the water, but I'm probably being really selfish in that statement, too. That's why I'm getting paid the big. That's why we're getting paid the big bucks sitting here, right?
I mean, here, here's, I'm just playing with numbers and again, we don't have to come to anything tonight. But similar to what Creighton said, I've always been more of a proponent of lower the base rate and increase the cost per gallon. So for instance, then if you had a twenty dollar connection cost with no gallons included, okay? So twenty is where this graph starts. To get to five thousand gallons, which is roughly our first tier if included, right? You're at twenty-two fifty. So that constitutes a twenty dollar drop in water rates for people, for base rate stuff. And I don't know if projection-wise that's sustainable, but what it ends up for a hundred thousand gallons is seventy dollars a month.
But I don't think us, us big users can make up for that.
Well, and maybe those, and that's, but I think the nice thing is at least you're playing with two numbers. What's your base connection fee?
Right.
And then what's your rate per gallon? And, and you just play with those numbers. If you change it and you go thirty dollars starting and then.
Wouldn't it really be good if we just had a number that keep this, this system sustainable? So if we came up with an, this is.
Everyone pays fifty bucks a month, period, done?
No, well, but that isn't gonna keep the system. That isn't enough money to keep it sustainable, I don't think.
But sustainable, and that's what, to that point, is that sustainable's got to also be based on a co, a cost per gallon. Because if, if we have a Vista rates, they're saying it, it costs X number of kilowatt hours to pump a gallon of water out of the ground. Then why should the cost of the gallons ever change? How are you ever going to try and balance this budget? If your gallon prices are, or cubic foot prices are always fluctuating and the cost to deliver it never does.
They just say the, it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, is, is that even close to ballpark? That would probably, to sustain the water system. So then we need to figure out what the usage is in the city and we need to charge accordingly.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I can say you guys are kind of focused on the upper end. I would be willing to bet.
It's rare.
It's, it's not.
To.
Bulk of the people, probably nine, what, ninety-five percent, I would say? Ninety-five percent of the people never go above five thousand gallons.
Well, and I, but I would agree with Stephen. They need to be charged. If they use five gallons, then you pay for five gallons plus the, the hookup fee.
But you're also talking about, right now, there's not a separate, well, we have all sorts of little carve-outs, if I remember the schedule correctly. But you're talking about how much water is the school using? How much water is the cemetery using? How much water is the city putting on its own parks? How much the water is nutrient using? I mean, because, yeah, you can look at, say, oh, well, the citizens of Harrington don't use much water. Okay, fine, but the citizens of Harrington are not the only ones who are putting strain on our water infrastructure.
I would totally agree. The school's gotta be a big.
Yeah, a, a, a cost of a cubic foot of water has to have an inherent value to it.
Oh, and what company was that, that was up, up by my house, filling their trucks with the, by the fire hydrant? Yeah, they were, they were paying that bulk rate. Yeah. So we do, we do have a meter that we can put on the fire hydrant so we see how much they're pumping.
Would it, would it be beneficial to maybe do a, like a little budget retreat all together, like all of us together for an hour or two?
A workshop.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
You can do it when I'm in Nashville.
So, okay, because, because what I'm hearing is, is you guys are also trying to wrap your mind around where's our cost coming from?
Yeah.
Because you're, you're right and you're wrong when it comes to this gallon cost more than that one. And I don't have the data, but like, we know a Vista has different tiers. Well, yeah, guess what? Those, as we use more and more electricity, the, the cost of using that electricity goes up on a tiered basis. And what does that mean to that, you know, after the fifteenth, when we hit that threshold and we're now buying more kilo, or spending more for the single, the same kilowatt?
Okay, so I think we can put this part of it to bed. Here's what, here's what I need from you guessing. Cause I can put, I, I can, we can reverse this and stop guessing. I need a year's worth of anonymized uses for all the meters in town. And if, if I can, and I don't need names to it, just, if I can see for a year, let's, let's take, well, we weren't reading meters last year.
Unfortunately, their, the problem here is the cohesion. We don't get.
Let, let's just take, since we started reading meters.
Okay.
It's the best we have.
We could, we could probably do a beginning and an end.
That's what I'm hoping so.
Of last year, because we, the, the monthly in-betweens, well, that's.
Do we just want to do one year? Do we want to try to?
No, year, this year too, but I'm saying for 2024, we could just say April, August, October.
Well, but the amount that gets used in a month is important because if we have a tiered system, it's not just about how many gallons were incurred. It's about when they were incurred determines the rate. So the thing is, let's just, give me the months that we can trust, however many that is. And then the thing is, I can take those, I'll put them into a spreadsheet and I'll make it so that we can just, we can play with data in real time to say, okay, if we had a, if we had this base rate and we had this cost per cubic feet, this is what we actually would have gained over those months. This is how it compares to the deficit. And then we can actually just run it instead of making these projections because otherwise, to the point of, well, you know, saying that, well, us three have big lawns and so we're thinking that if we raise the gallonage, it's going to make a difference. Maybe it's all really based on base rate. But I think if you factor in things like the school and other users, it, you know, but we'll know that if we actually say these were the readings for every meter in town. And of course, we'll have to factor in the fact that those are not necessarily trustworthy, but it's the best data we have for now. So let's do it that way and then we can stop guessing of this.
That would be good.
I can get that for you by the day tomorrow?
No rush. I'll just make sure it's, that I have the, all that dumped into a sheet by next time we talk about it.
Okay. Uh, so we're gonna table this.
Again.
I think the bigger thing, and we don't need to maybe do it now, but water, similar to garbage, is a math problem that should be able to be solved. The wastewater treatment stuff is a bigger issue because there's no meters, there's no, it's, it's this more nebulous thing that's, you're just gonna have to probably pin a number to it and see if it gets better. I guess according to, to what this says, we're on track to half our deficit from last year, so.
Next year, we should be zero.
We've survived this long and, I mean, I, I've, I've told people before, for these things where we can't actually do math and figure out what the number's supposed to be, the best thing you can do is track better every year. And I guess even though a thirty-five thousand dollar deficit is bad, if it's half what the deficit was yesterday, last year, we're tracking well and we'll try and get it better. But I don't know how to sit down with wastewater treatment stuff and say, this is what wastewater treatment needs to be priced at, especially when is the construction supposed to start on the redo? Cause that's gonna, that, that will take all of their numbers and go.
I will be happy to talk to you and anybody else about that, but I think opening up that Pandora's box.
Sure.
This evening is.
Okay, regardless of when it happens and.
It's not gonna, it's not on the, it's not.
Whenever, whenever it happens, because that change is supposed to change operating costs. It's supposed to change how much electricity we use. It's supposed to change how much additives we. it's supposed to change how much electricity we use, it's supposed to change how much additives we put in, all of those kind of things. I would say, don't get too concerned about trying to get rid of the wastewater treatment deficit because we don't even know what the next ten, twenty years of operating costs are gonna be projected for with that.
Exactly.
If we're tracking half the deficit, call it good enough for now and.
Have a wastewater workshop. I know more about wastewater plants than everyone else can know.
So we're, you know, like, learning how to all work together here, do we wanna try to do like a, more than just a couple hours, like a half a day or a day?
Let, let's just worry about you and I getting numbers, a, a, a hypothetical.
I'd bet for the entire budget instead of just the.
Oh, for the height, wow.
For the entirety of the budget.
That's probably the next item on our agenda, right?
Is the which?
Council priorities for budget for the next year.
Actually, I have one more thing for Cassie to bring up on the exciting agenda, is actually the online utility payments.
Right.
Okay, so as most of you know, probably some of you have requested, about half of our population is begging for a way to pay online for their utility bills. I've reached out, I've spoken with Intel Pay. It's a system by which they give a little, a little click-on badge, we can put it on our Facebook for now until we have a website and then we can get that going. They, they user, the, the payer bears the cost of the transaction, which is about three-point-two-five percent approximately. So that incurs no cost for the city. However, it does not play well with others, so it doesn't play well with Springbrook. In a city our size, not that big of a deal, we would reconcile the morning after rather than the night of, for the day, to get all those payments that have come through settled, they, they do all their stuff like at midnight or whatever. So the next morning we would come in, we would input that into Springbrook manually. Again, not a huge deal. There is another option that I found out at the budget workshop that does play well with Springbrook, that imports all those numbers over. However, there is a small cost involved for cities, I did not call and ask about those. I wanted to probably check to gauge interest first, if you wanted me to get some of our numbers, I will. But if we want something that goes straight into Springbrook, that is the only option, because that is the only, I talked to Jason from Springbrook, that's it. We could do Intel Pay, like I said, for a city our size, if we wanna incur no cost, it wouldn't take much more work for the clerks.
Well, in a sense, isn't it kind of the same, whether we get it as a check or whether we get it as a memo that says so-and-so paid this?
Yes, we would be, we would be, even though they made the payment, we would have to input that payment as if they were making one in person. Which, not a huge deal with a city our size, we have two-hundred-and-forty-two accounts.
But even when I mail you my check, that's all manual.
It is all manual.
It, it's important to understand, there is no automated bill, bill, way for the city to receive money from the citizens in any way, shape and form, so this is no worse than anything else as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, as far as that system that integrates with Springbrook, I'd be interested to know what the fee is, but I've never known anything attached to Springbrook to have small fees involved.
And it's not from Springbrook, it is a.
Well, I know, but I'm sure they're.
Only one that is compatible.
I'm sure they're leveraging the monopoly quite well.
It's called Express Pay, yeah, yeah, exactly.
But yeah, I, I think going to an online system, cause a lot of other places have it. I mean, we consistently hear from fifty percent of the people that come in, when are you gonna have this?
Yeah, but fifty percent of the people are not gonna use it because what people are expecting is they like to live in a world where there is no additional fee for credit card payments, like with a Vista, there is no additional fee. You'll find at least ten to thirty percent of these people who have been begging for it won't use it when they, why didn't it go up more?
So, so how it looks, just so you know, is they go to a webpage, they have to fill it all in and they have to say that they're gonna pay X number of dollars, it's, none of this is pre-populated.
It's like the ATM banks.
So they have to say, I'm gonna pay a hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and five cents. And then right there, it shows what the fee is, and they're gonna absorb. And when they submit it, you know, they'll have to, there'll be a trigger there where they have to say who they are, so we don't just suddenly get money sent to us without any notification of who they are.
There are safeguards in place with Intel Pay for sure, that, that, we can't get an anonymous payment that we can't trace. They make, they make safeguards in place to ensure that that, we know who sent that payment.
So, I mean, it's not gonna be hidden. I mean, if somebody doesn't wanna pay that three-point-two-five percent or whatever it is, then they don't have to, they can just pay it the regular way. I can just see a lot of people just saying, oh, it's late, or I don't wanna incur the five-dollar late fee, or whatever the case may be. I think it would help some of the people who don't pay, it's not that they don't have the money, they just, oh, it's a hundred bucks. That's two hundred bucks, and all of a sudden, it's four hundred bucks, and it's like, oh crap, I gotta pay this, and now they're getting a shut-off notice.
If you have no problems with Intel Pay, I'd, I'd, I'd vote to authorize that tonight. As long as the city's not.
We're not eating a fee?
Yeah. Makes no difference to me.
The treasurer likes that option.
Are people able to call in and pay with a credit card?
If they, if we use Intel Pay, I think that there might be an option for us to be able to help them over the phone to do that. I will, I can inquire further for sure, but I believe so.
If it's similar to the, we use a similar system, not in any way, shape or form related, but we use a similar system. And yes, people can call out and say, I don't have access, or my computer's broken or whatever, can you do it? And we just literally go to the same page that they're, they would otherwise be using and enter in their information.
And I looked for, like, there's, the Lions Club can take, like, we did, it's, it's not hard for businesses. The context is, I thought a long, I, twice I made effort to try and set us up with some, with something like this. Nobody wants to touch municipalities, like Stripe, all these, you know, all the ones that you, like, if you run a small business, you, you find Stripe readers or iPads set up, you can't get a municipality on any of those. Yeah, so.
It feels to me that Intel Pay kinda has a stronghold in the market. Everything kinda goes back to them from trying to do a little more digging to see what my other options are. GoDaddy has an option like that if you use them to build your website, well, we don't need, we don't need.
Yeah, but even those, it seems like usually the cities can't get on a lot of the commercial options.
Right, so I believe, I believe we do have that option and I will find out for sure.
And this is modeled after the insurance, or maybe vice versa, because if we send a bill to somebody that says you owe a hundred dollars, we have to collect a hundred dollars, to collect less or to pay a fee out of that is to violate numerous regulations and insurance laws. So this effectively does the same thing, if their bill was one-thirty-seven oh five, that's what they pay, that's what we get. Well, they pay that, plus they don't.
And then they pay the, you know, the small fee to Intel Pay.
You guys want?
Sure, I'm all for that.
Okay, I'll, I'll motion we authorize setup of Intel Pay, I'll put a little caveat on it, that until we see what the actual fee is for the one that's.
For Express Pay?
Just think of this as a pilot. Don't roll it out big until we know what that alternative fully is, but we can at least start to look at this as a pilot. Cause there's no, if a few people use it and it starts to work well and then we find out that the one that's attached to Springbrook is even better, we can switch without a lot of impact, but I don't see a reason why we can't start down this road. People have been asking for it, a lot of people will use it even with the fee, so. I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion, first and second, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor of adopting Intel Pay on a semi-trial basis, signified by say and I?
Aye.
Okay, three-point-oh, okay. Thank you. It's an action item for the budget discussion, it really shouldn't be an action item unless you guys come up with something. We're at that time of the year where we should be fully engaged in looking at twenty-twenty-six and what our budget does. We just talked about the water, but if there is a pet project, you guys are thinking you would like to see done, a focus of something, whatever it is on a budget basis, that is over and above just the normal day-to-day operating expenses. I'm just, it's almost kinda ties it with mayor comments, I mean, I'd like you to start thinking about that because we're gonna start hammering on this budget here next month. I'm expecting budget requests from the different departments and the library and everything, so. Now's the time, so if you could, just start thinking about it. And if you've got any priorities and you wanna tell me right now, that's already on your mind or whatever, let's talk about it, so.
Doesn't really sound like we can afford pet projects.
Yeah.
No, but if there's something, so we'll see this. Like, these ADA ramps that just got done, you know, that didn't cost the city anything, it's a benefit to the city. It costs, it's, apparently, one of the few organizations out there that seems to still have a budget is the transfer, is the DOT and the Transportation Improvement Board. So if there are, we, we can't redo our streets because they're not gonna pay to have our streets redone until we get the pipes underneath them fixed, they're not gonna repave the road and then have it tore up to put new pipes in, so. But other things, if, if there's such as something that you can think of, then maybe, you know, it just, I can start looking at grants or offers or whatever. We're, we're looking at ways to find money to get the memorial halls, especially the kitchen. Looking at different ways to, to try and find money to get that improved and updated, so.
I would just ask for an updated wish list specifically from Public Works. Cause an effort of late has been trying to make sure that they have proper equipment. And I know some of the things we've checked off that list, but I don't know whether the largest items still are remaining for them.
The semi-large items, I know already off the top of my head, is they would like a legitimate, full-size compressor to operate out of the shop, and a welder. They, and they don't even want a knife, it's not like they wanna stick or, or they just wanna stick welder, they don't even want a big or a wire feed or anything. They just wanna pitch this one of welder that they can turn on and it works. The, the compressor that was in there when they turned it on, it started to have flames coming out of the armature. So, that got tossed.
That's an under-a-thousand-dollar item.
Yeah, so I was, those are the, aside from tools and equipment like that for the shop to help them maintain and work in there.
Well, I'd say get them the welder now. That's just something that, they've proven their ability to use the tools that we've given them, I wouldn't want them to be without a welder, is my vote, so.
Is there one there that's just worn out?
No, they don't have. Well, if there was, they tried to use it and it didn't work, so.
Well, I'm assuming at least one of them has some experience welding?
Yeah, I don't think either one of them are certified, but I mean, they're talking about stick welding, you know, with your standard.
I'm not certified, I'm a hell of a welder.
There you go. So, they, they just wanna be able to tack stuff together, you know, just.
And they should be able to.
Sixty-eleven, you know, type of stuff, so. Yeah. Okay. Additions to the agenda. I'll hammer these out, northwest corner of First and Adams.
So, that particular house has weeds in it, no lawn whatsoever. It's, it's basically all dirt and weeds that are, some of them are as tall as the TV.
And it's a house, it's a residence?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, next door is what the, I guess the newest house in Harrington.
Oh, okay.
Terry and, anyway, he, he came to me and wanted to know if I could bring this up because, you know, they're, they're getting the seed and all the, everything from this particular name.
Sounds like it fits the definition of a, of.
It's bad.
Part of our nuisance ordinance.
It's really bad. And, yeah, so, you know, he's having to clean up his yard as a result of it.
Sure. Okay.
So.
Yeah, and, you know, you don't have to wait till these to bring those to my attention.
Okay.
So, anytime.
Well, I, I've been out in the field.
Yeah.
I could have, but, yeah.
Okay. And. Third-party material on city property.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go into this real in-depth, but just something to consider cause at some point, we should probably come to more of a policy on this. I noticed for a while, there were signs from some painting company that people were sticking on city property and.
Like on the right-ofways?
Yeah, and there have been other things that have showed up on the right-ofways and we can go through lists of what they are, but I, I don't really know what our, I don't really wanna be hard-nosed about it, but at some point, we gotta know where we stop, as far as who can just stick something up on ground that city owns and what that means. So, I guess something for you guys to keep an eye out for occurrences of, and then we should maybe come to some kind of a policy or make sure that we've consulted our ordinances to know what, what are we supposed to be beholding to, cause.
Yeah, no, I'm sensitive, that's one of the reasons why we put a bulletin board out there. You know, if it's directly city or community-related, it can come in here, but other than that, that's kind of a.
I've thrown a couple of them in the back of my pickup and hold them off.
Should we, should we be handling?
Am I okay doing that? It's on city property, do they have a right to post something on city property?
Are they paying to have it there?
Yeah, I, well, it's like campaign signs are.
Well, campaign signs, they actually, well, you guys probably got the same thing, when you run for election.
Well, I'm gonna print them out, the elected, the general election, I'm gonna have them all over town.
I'm just saying, state sends people who are running for election, all kinds of literature.
Oh, I know, I got, I get, get in it all the time.
And like, what if the signs have broad exemptions from the rules?
Right, they do.
Yeah.
They do, and if you get caught pulling one out, you can be fined or something, it seems like, it's not, it's crazy.
Okay. Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Not I.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, signified by say and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I've kind of addressed everything I wanted to, the mayor's comments, any other public comments?
Just one question relative to what we said last meeting regarding well number one, do we have any updates on progress for that?
We are waiting to get an absolute hard number of some really, no. Just, there was some battering back and forth about how big and what size and will it go down there? And can it make the corner or not? And we're trying to put those details. I can tell you to put the biggest one that we can possibly get down there, we can probably get it down the hole, but it ain't likely to come out, so.
Cut the pipe?
I will tell you that the state kind of seesawed our way when we were talking about just banning it, it's gotta be sealed and then it's like, wait a minute, it's a well in the ground, we could use that to measure, so. That, that hole in the ground has value to a number of people for different purposes, so just a heads up on that. Yeah, and I, like you guys saw in the video, whatever bid we get is also going to include the cost of getting all the stuff out, so we know that that's not gonna mess up things later on. I was hoping to have that quite honestly last week and it just, the guy's just as busy as we are, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other work for you guys? Okay, can I adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning, signified by say and I?
Aye.
All right, thank you.